Oh, first, let me defer to Councilmember Lawson, who is the most senior at-large member of the city council. I'm going to pass the virtual gavel over to her to manage discussions on item number 11D and item number 11E.
Okay, Councilmember Lawson, are you ready for me to go forward?
I think we just lost her.
Oh, no. Let's see if I can get her back.
I'm doing this. I see her. I'm ready. Okay.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Yes, we can hear you.
My apologies.
I'm ready. All right, so we'll start with item 11D. This is 2020-58, A Consideration for an Ordinance for Introduction of the City of Aurora, Colorado, Repealing and Replacing Sections 54-2 and Sections 54-101 and 54-1010 of the City Covert Leading to the Financing of Electoral Campaigns. And Councilmember Lawson, we do have six callers on the public comment line for this item.
Okay, so can we start with those calls?
Yes, we can.
Our first caller is Pat Dunn.
Good evening, Mayor Kaufman and council members. Again, my name is Pat Dunn. I live in Ward 3. I believe it is extraordinarily purgent that council passed campaign finance reform in Aurora. By doing so, it gives democracy back to average citizens running for office. At present, there are no limits on campaign donations. This is crazy. With campaign finance reform, everyday citizens will be encouraged to run for office, not having to rely on big-money donors. Speaking of big-money donors, if Aurora had instituted campaign finance reform years ago, it is likely that Councilmember Gruber would not be serving on council and Mayor Kaufman would not be our mayor. Both gentlemen received huge amounts of money that grassroots candidates could only dream of. This is why I believe Aurora residents deserve a campaign finance system that is transparent and fair. Denver, Lakewood, and Boulder approve limits on campaign contributions, and I feel the city of Aurora should also. I urge council to approve Mayor Pro Tem Nicole Johnson and Juan Marcano's ordinance this evening. I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your call. Our next caller is Edith Henke.
Good evening. My name is Edith Henke, and I reside in Ward 2. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for the time to speak to you tonight about agenda item 11D, Campaign Finance Reform. I am concerned about my 19th Amendment right to vote becoming useless. A qualified candidate, to me, is one who cares about the needs of the community as a whole, who recognize they are in office to serve, not to make money. I take my right to vote very seriously and have voted in local, county, state, and national elections for the past 50 years. I have become very frustrated watching as other candidates who have the money knock qualified candidates out of the running for that office. Those candidates who have the backing of special interest groups and corporations, once they take their respective office, I have noticed that their voting record does not reflect American citizens' needs. I see the needs of the special interest groups and corporations fulfilled. Kentucky Senator Mitch McConnell was a good example of a dark-money candidate. When he took office, the poverty level was high in Kentucky. After being a senator for 36 years, the poverty level presently is ranked at 7th in the nation. He had ample time to improve the quality of life for those Kentuckyans living in poverty, but instead he voted in favor of bills that would benefit corporations. Now he is sitting on over 300 bills passed by the House, which would increase the quality of life for Americans, but he refuses to bring them up for a vote in Senate because he says there is no chance they will pass. In other words, those bills would not be beneficial for the corporations he served. This example happens in our local elections as well. For instance, since Mayor Kaufman considers himself a political figure, then the rule stating that anything said during executive session is not to become public knowledge does not apply to him. Yet another example of politicians with deep pockets that do not believe the rule of law applies to them. I support the city's campaign finance reform agenda, item 11D, brought forth by Mayor Pro Tem Nicole Johnson and Councilmember Juan Marcano. Let us make our elections fair. This way, the candidate who is the best fit for the people will win an election instead of a candidate with deep pockets. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your call. Our next call is Dale Nichols.
Good evening, council members. My name is Dale Nichols. I'm a resident of Aurora and have been for about 20 years. I'm a proud resident of Aurora. I cannot thank you when Denverites, you just want just one of their subsidies. We have our own vibrant culture, our own needs, and our own political institutions. I'd like to address and clarify one particular point that's been brought up about the campaign finance ordinance being sponsored by Member Pro Tem Johnson and Councilmember Marcano. There have been complaints written by outsiders. I started this process back in 2017 by talking to people about it. In 2019, I made up a list of ideas, which I spoke to council about at that time. My first draft was done around the end of December of 2019, and at that point, I began soliciting help, some of it from outside of Aurora. But I've been on the drafting committee continuously, and if there were something that I objected to strongly, I think it would have been rejected by the committee as a whole. So this ordinance is indigenous to Aurora and speaks to Aurora's needs. I urge passage of 11D. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Our next caller is Jan Wilson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Am I coming through? Okay. Good evening, city council members and Mayor Kaufman. My name is Jan Wilson. I've been a resident of Aurora for 45 years, and I want to thank you for moving campaign finance reform forward for discussion and decision this evening. I urge you to pass the ordinance as it was submitted by Councilmember Juan Marcano and Mayor Pro Tem Nicole Johnson. I feel like the other measure is not as effective or thoroughly researched, and it raised more questions than it answered. Excuse me. So to be clear, my comments and support relate to the Marcano-Johnson ordinance as presented. I believe that campaign finance reform, getting big money out of politics, as before you in this ordinance, is the single most important action that you can take for our city, for my city. Something that you do as a council will make the same long-lasting and fundamentally transformative difference for our city. I firmly believe that this action will initially chip away at and eventually eliminate the cynicism that has become so prevalent because of the interdicting, corrupting moneyed interests into the operations of our government through the electoral process. When people know that through their vote, their concerns are heard and really matter, they will become invested in and involved in many ways. It will no longer be them against us, but they with us. How exciting that will be for our city. I want to express my thanks to those people who have worked to formulate this ordinance and the many, many hours of research and dedication that you have devoted to its development and presentation. With the passage of campaign finance reform, I look forward to being in a city that truly represents its people. I will be proud to know that Aurora is stepping out as a leader in campaign finance reform, and U.S. council members will be among the leaders. I believe that with this vote, you will be blazing the trail for other municipalities, and in that way, will be leading not just our city, but the country, back to having a truly representative government. I am hoping that tomorrow's headlines will read something like these: Aurora City Council trusts its citizens and votes accordingly; or Aurora votes to uphold its ideals; or Aurora leads the country by empowering its citizens; or Aurora City Council unanimously voted for Aurora to become citizen-led. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your call. Our next caller is Diego Lopez Fleming.
Hi. I hope everyone on council is doing well and in good health during these times. I actually agree with all the callers who have called beforehand. To cite my sources, according to the Denver Post, on November 5th of last year, the Aurora mayor's race was $1.2 million. Mike Kaufman raised almost half that, and he only won the election by 200 votes. And he is the person who supposedly is going to use campaign finance to bring fairness to Aurora's elections. I think that's pretty funny. So I'm calling in support of the plan proposed by Juan Marcano and Nicole Johnson. It's far more comprehensive, it's far more well thought out, and when you look at the 30-day post-election report for Mike Kaufman, there's $75,000 in donations from Michael Kaufman. Now, I don't know if that's the same person, but it sounds similar name. So I think that's something that we need to look out for, the fact that the mayor's trying to approve a proposal that would hurt him, even though he's the one who is taking advantage of our lack of campaign finance reforms, and all of a sudden, he wants to put forward campaign finance reforms. I think that's ridiculous, and I think it's funny that he thought he could get away with that. And I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Marcano and Councilmember Johnson again. The next step is public campaign financing, and hopefully, we can get that done before the next election, because we need real representative leadership on the city council when it's clear that there are few council members that do not represent the majority of interests in Aurora. So thank you once again. I hope that council members continue to stay in good health, and I hope everyone has a great night. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Our next caller is Randy Webb.
Hi, this is Randy Webb. I'm in Ward 4 of Aurora. I feel that it is necessary to have robust campaign finance reform in Aurora, and so I support the detailed plan of my councilmember Juan Marcano and Mayor Pro Tem Nicole Johnson, and ask that the council vote yes to adopt it. As Councilmember Marcano has said, because it relates to who is then voting in our council, quote, "Every single thing that people who live in Aurora care about relates directly back to campaign finance." The amount of money a candidate has to run a campaign is important, but it's also well-known that who contributes that money, especially if it is a lot, and most often influences policy and voting of candidates. The 2019 election was the most recent demonstration of how important it is to get out of municipal races so much money and often from unknown influence. The Johnson-Marcano reform plan has many good points, including, and with forethought, an oversight process that is separate from city government, as the city clerk would refer matters to a third-party hearing officer retained by the city. States and federal rules generally set a floor on ethics, so it's time that Aurora aligns with that, as well as other cities having similar, stronger ethical campaign finance reforms. As Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The time is always right to do what is right." I want to thank councilmembers Marcano and Johnson for your time, hard work, presentation, and public inclusion in your plan for campaign finance reform. I'm grateful that it has been such an important issue for both of you, even before your elections, and recognize Mayor Pro Tem Johnson's earlier efforts along this path. As a citizen of Aurora, support from other council members for this plan has been very encouraging, and I'm grateful to them also, and I hope that all of you will support this particular plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. That concludes our calls for 11D.
Get a motion?
Councilmember Lawson, before you go into the motion...
Oh, Councilmember Gruber.
There is a factually incorrect statement there. I'd refer anyone to take a look at my campaign reports that are public record in the city. I did not receive the amount of money that people were talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gruber. Can I get a motion?
Councilmember Lawson.
Councilmember John...
Yes, move this board, item 11D, please.
Okay. It's approved by Councilmember Pro Tem Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Marcano. Is there any discussion?
Councilmember Lawson.
Councilmember Hiltz.
Thank you. I do support this. I wanted to...I'll keep my remarks brief, but I think most of us on council remember Dwayne Sen, who is, I think, dear to a lot of us, and this is just something that I know he worked on for a very long time, and even worked with Mayor Pro Tem Johnson on early in the days. And so I just think it would be...we would be remiss to move forward and talk about this item without honoring the work that, you know, he's done on this, regardless of how the vote turns out, but just recognizing that we wouldn't probably be here if it weren't for the years of work that he put into this issue as well.
Further discussion?
Councilmember Lawson.
Councilmember Coons.
I just want to, you know, repeat what I already had said last time, which is I think it's really important that this ordinance does make sure that these issues are adjudicated by entities that are not serving at the pleasure of council. So the other ordinance specifically says it would be the Election Commission who serve at the pleasure of council, and I think it's important that those that adjudicate be independent of council.
Is there any more discussion?
I have an amendment. The mayor.
Okay. Mayor Kaufman.
Thank you.
Mayor Kaufman.
Thank you. I don't know how to address you. Acting mayor.
Councilmember Lawson.
Okay, Acting Mayor Lawson. I'd like to move an amendment that would change the contribution limits from $800 to $1,000 for the mayor-at-large candidates per election cycle, and from $400 to $500 for award candidates per election cycle.
Okay. Mayor, also, I do have a competing amendment based on that same item, and I would like to actually do my proposal as well. So do you have yours written of what exactly this would look like? Is that...
Well, I think that's...I think it's very simple. I mean, I'm just changing the numbers.
Okay.
And that's an amendment.
I second.
Is there a second?
Is there a second for that, for the amendment? Councilmember Gruber? Who did a first? Mayor?
Well, myself, the mayor.
Okay, and then seconded by Councilmember Gruber. So can we...let's move for a motion? Call for a vote? Is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Sorry. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Amendment.
Madam Chair, I think these numbers are just more...a little bit more realistic, and I think they just make sense, and so I'd like to move that.
I have a question.
Okay, further discussion. Councilmember Hiltz.
Bergen.
Oh, Councilmember Bergen.
Yes, do you have an attorney available on the call?
Is Dan Brodman available? Or Dan Lathers? That could address the question from the council member.
And you actually want Mr. Lathers to respond?
Okay.
Is he available?
I am here, and I'm listening. Thank you.
Okay, great. So my question is on placing any limits on individual contributions, and can you speak to Citizens United in terms of money being basically free speech protected by the First Amendment?
I can speak to Citizens United and Buckley v. Vallejo, which both address this in one manner or another. Yes, Citizens United, what we have heard from the media and the pundits and what is generally accepted is, coming out of that ruling, is that money equals speech in many cases. Buckley v. Vallejo had probably the definitive take on this particular issue, and it was an interesting take. Their take is that as to the First Amendment issue, the fact that you are allowed to contribute is your speech, and your speech is, "I support this candidate because I have contributed." The limit on that contribution, they said, is not a significant aspect of speech, because the speech is the support. The amount is perhaps irrelevant. So they approved there being limits, potentially, on the amount of contributions. They felt that was particularly true as to support of candidates or candidate committees, because those same people who are limited in their contribution, whether it's $400 or $1,000 or $500, also have opportunities to speak on campaign issues through other avenues, which would be independent expenditures, rather than direct support of that candidate's campaign. They still have the opportunity to speak to campaigns generally, to issues generally, through those independent expenditures. So the limits are perhaps not as cut and dried as would first be felt by just that expenditure towards that campaign committee. Is that answered the question, councilperson?
Yes, so they still can...well, kind of. It's not really that clear. So as an individual, freedom to make my own money as an individual, and then freedom to give my money away as I see fit is not...you're saying is not allowed?
I'm not saying that. I believe it's the Supreme Court that is saying that, and they're not saying it in totality. They're saying there are limits on certain aspects of your speech and not on other aspects. So directly supporting that candidate, they say that your speech is a yes-or-no question. You were allowed to support that. They're saying the amount is not a First Amendment issue, that at that point, they're looking at the purity of campaigns, and that is something that Congress was allowed to regulate in that case, and presumably, the council would be allowed to regulate at this level.
So...but as an individual, I could contribute to a PAC? Is that right?
Yes, in addition to contributing directly to a campaign, you have other opportunities of contribution or speech regarding these issues, which could be independent expenditure committees, PACs, depending on what's allowed. Now, some of these proposals are limiting PACs, but they're not...or eliminating PACs, but they're not eliminating independent expenditures, so there are still other avenues for your speech.
Right, and me that...
Your speech, we just get to stop your speech through a specific avenue, and we don't stop, we just limit it.
Right, so I guess my point after all this is that people will find a way to give money, and what I think this does, maybe unintentionally, is going to drive a lot more dark money, where you don't know where it's coming from. I have a second question for the attorney, and that is on out-of-state, and I know we had some discussion on that, but why would a council not be able to prohibit out-of-state contributions on a local city government election when they don't have any interest in our city? It seems like that would be undue outside influence on us.
I think that's a matter of political opinion, or it should be robust debate in this more than it is a legal question. Certainly, if one is trying to control local elections, and the purpose and the gist of this, whether it is statewide, and the state has made efforts, or whether it is municipal or county-wide, other subdivisions, that's an interesting question, a robust question as to the purpose of these.
So would I, as a council member, be able to make an amendment to not allow out-of-state contributions, because they, in my opinion, don't have anything to do with our local community?
That would be very interesting, whether that would pass. The question has actually not been ruled on yet by the Supreme Court. I do not find that wholly inconsistent with the idea of local control of local elections.
Right, I mean, we talk about...yeah.
I leave it to the council member and to the mayor pro tem, whether they would accept that as an amendment at this point in time. It wouldn't surprise me whether they've given some consideration to making it that expansive, but I do not know that answer. I won't speak for them.
Okay, but I could make an amendment.
You can make an amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Marcano.
Thank you, Chair Lawson. So, Councilmember Bergen, that's something that we actually did talk to the legal experts who were helping with the draft, and while I strongly would like to actually do that, they were certain that this would immediately get challenged and potentially cause the whole thing to get struck down. So while I really do appreciate where you're coming from with that, unfortunately, the advice that we're giving is that this is not the appropriate avenue to do that. We were given an alternative that is already in place in other jurisdictions across the country, and you can effectively create an opt-in system where you can self-regulate where you accept donations from, and the incentive for that is typically a public match. So there's...you know, Denver has one in place, Seattle has one in place, and a couple of other jurisdictions do as well. And through that, they're able to kind of govern that kind of activity, and that's something that I would also be strongly supportive of, but unfortunately, we'd be talking about a separate measure.
Okay, I...
Councilmember Bergen.
Sorry. So I could still make an amendment, though, and I would have your support, even though it may then get challenged down the road.
Council...Mayor Pro Tem Johnston.
Thank you. I actually would not support that, I'm just speaking for myself, just because we did do a deep dive of the legality, Supreme Court challenges, and we were very conscientious with everything that we put into this ordinance, that it would not be legally challenged. So, speaking for myself, I don't want to speak for Councilmember Marcano, I would not support it because of that risk.
Councilmember Marcano.
Just to clarify, apologies if I misspoke, but that's what I was trying to say, is that while I appreciate where you're coming from, and that's something I'm interested in, based off the advice we got, it would be challenged and struck down.
I can't say this, there is potentially some definitional problems. Let's say I am not a resident of the city of Aurora, but that I have substantial business interests here. For instance, a warehouse that I distribute, a field office that I distribute, I pay taxes here, I am involved, I'm concerned with roadways and infrastructure and other matters. Am I a foreign influence because I happen to reside in Nebraska, I haven't yet moved over from North Platte? Am I, you know, have that interest? We end up getting into some dicey definitional problems on who has an interest in a local election and what that...the extent of that interest should be. It's a fascinating subject, but as Councilmember Marcano says, it is a deep dive, and it would be...
Right.
...definitionally quite large.
May I address that, please?
Councilmember Bergen.
So you just made my point, though, because if you have an out-of-state interest that is business-related, we're now in this current ordinance, actually, both ordinances, we're not allowing contributions from corporations or LLCs, partnerships, businesses. So businesses that reside in Aurora that have business interests, such as a restaurant or, you know, other kind of business, they do have, you know, an interest in what happens policy-wise in the city that might affect their business, and we're excluding those in the current ordinances. So I would say, actually, if I propose an amendment to not allow out-of-state contributions, then I'm right in line with what's in the current ordinance. So I would like to make an amendment... So, I would like to make an amendment, and I don't know when I'm allowed to do that, but I would like to make an amendment to not allow out-of-state contributions.
Counselor Member Bergen, I'd like to, before you speak, Counselor Member Bergen, I would like to get a little clarification from the city attorney. We have a motion on the floor, an amendment on the floor. I actually have a substitute amendment. Counselor Member Bergen wants to propose an amendment. So, what I do need some help with, we're still, can you assist me to, can you assist me to how I should direct this, these motions, I mean, these amendments, please?
So, the first question becomes, if they're friendly amendments, if, so, does your amendment align with the mayor's First Amendment? If that's true, you can combine them and move them forward, otherwise, you're going to vote on your amendments one at a time. So, the mayor has one on the floor, you would vote through it, then you would vote through your amendment, then you would vote through Counselor Member Bergen's amendment. If they can't be combined together, then you take them one at a time.
Okay, I think mine has, I have a different request, so, I think mine is different, and then, so, I would like to probably proceed, after we have discussion with Mayor Kaufman's amendment, then I'd like to propose mine, and then Counselor Member Bergen.
Actually, I think I did mine first before you-
Okay, sorry. Do your first.
Yeah, I agree. I agree to take them independently. Thank you.
Okay, okay. And Counselor Member Bergen, did you have a question?
Yes, I was going to call point of order, because we already have an amendment on the floor, which was Mayor Kaufman's amendment, and you asked for discussion, and we really haven't been discussing his, we've been discussing everything else.
Well, we have been discussing, I guess, to me, Counselor Member Bergen's question, what is kind of related to actually expenditures and money, so, to me, I see some relation, but I see your point. So, is there further discussion on Mayor Kaufman's amendment? Counselor Member Coombs?
Oh, I was just going to move to call for the question, but you, it sounds like you were doing it, so.
Could I? Thank you. I actually am not going to be supporting Mayor Kaufman's amendment. I appreciated that Counselor Member Lawson, who is doing the challenging job of chairing a meeting and offering an amendment, reached out to the sponsors on this amendment ahead of time, and as a council member who represents Aurora, and if everyone else can mute, I'm sorry, just because I'm getting background noise, as a council member who represents Aurora and a cosponsor of the ordinance, I would like it to stay at $400. So, I'm going to be supporting Counselor Member Lawson's amendment when she proposes it. I will not be a, I will be a no for Mayor Kaufman's amendment. Thank you.
Is there, Counselor Member Coombs?
Sorry, I did just remember a question, which is, would these-
Counselor Member Coombs?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Counselor Member Lawson's lagging again.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, my question is, would these amendments to deal with contribution limits impact the small donor committee totals?
Is there someone that can address that question?
Madam Chair.
Is there someone that can address the question?
Counselor Member Lawson.
Is there someone that could address the question?
Counselor Member Lawson. She's having connectivity issues.
Someone that can address the question?
Yes, Counselor Member Lawson, I can address that.
Okay.
All right.
Go ahead, Counselor Member Marcano.
All right, thank you. So, the motion itself would not directly impact that because of the language. The limits on independent, I'm sorry, on independent small donor committees does not tie back to what the specific limits are for Aurora or at-large races. We could do that, if that wants to be part of the amendment, but as it currently stands, and as I understand the amendment, it would not have an effect. We'd have to amend that separately then for consistency.
Is there further questions? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna, let's move to, can you call the question on the mayor's amendment, please? I'm going to try to change computers really quickly. Can we call the question, can you, city clerk, can you call the question on Mayor Kaufman's?
If I may, I would like to just reread the motion, so everyone is clear, and we know we have it correct for the record. This is a change in the contribution limits to $1,000 for the at-large and mayoral. I'm sorry, what did it? Okay, I'm not quite sure what she asked, but I'm just going to keep going. The motion is a change to the contribution limits for $1,000 for at-large and narrow races, and $500 for Aurora elections. Mayor, was that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Counselor Member Lawson?
No.
Counselor Member Bergen? Counselor Member Coombs?
No.
Counselor Member Bergen?
Yes.
Counselor Member Marcano?
No.
Counselor Member Gruber?
Yes.
Counselor Member Gardner?
Yeah.
Counselor Member Hill? Counselor Member Modio?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnston?
No.
And as an amendment, Mayor Kaufman, you get to vote, so.
Yes.
The item fails with a vote of five to six.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Member Bergen, you have an amendment.
Yes, ma'am.
Please restate your amendment, please.
Yes, my amendment is to not allow out-of-state contributions.
Okay, can we have a discussion, a motion?
Just a second.
Okay. Counselor Member Bergen, and then Counselor Member Gruber, second discussion.
Counselor Member Lawson?
Counselor Member Coombs?
You know, as was already discussed on this motion, I support this in principle, but in practicality, it's a poison pill amendment that would essentially get us caught up in legal challenges instead of being able to implement this legislation, so I will be opposing.
Okay, Counselor Member Gruber?
I'd like to address, maybe the way it was phrased, the way it was phrased is that a person cannot give. Maybe a better way to phrase it is that a candidate cannot receive out-of-state money. That way, we are not interfering with a person's ability to give, or we're putting a rule on a candidate itself. In the same way, that the ordinance will not allow a candidate to receive money from a business, or a candidate will not receive money from an LLC. So, in other words, I don't believe we can put a restriction on a giver, someone who is giving money, but we can put restrictions on a person who is receiving. So, having said that, I would like to recommend to Counselor Member Bergen to rephrase it, that a candidate will not be able to receive out-of-state money for their campaign.
That's fine, yeah, I can definitely rephrase it, not allow receipt of out-of-state contributions.
Counselor Member Bergen, just for the record, can you restate the motion, can you restate your motion with that, with that revision, please? So, the public knows exactly how it reads.
Okay, let me try this. So, my amendment is that, that one, that you cannot accept out-of-state contributions.
Okay, is there further discussion on Counselor Member Bergen's amendment? Counselor Member Coombs?
Where would that go in the existing ordinance? Like, what section would you be proposing to put that in?
It would go in, let's see, how about, it goes in 54101C. I guess I'd have to make a new letter.
Is there further discussion on the Bergen amendment?
Counselor Member Lawson? Counselor Member Hills?
Counselor Member Hills?
Thank you. I don't support this. I support this in theory, but, again, in practicality, I would argue that if you have a parent who lives and works here, or a child who lives and works here, or a family member who is maybe in the detention center here, you would have a very vested interest in the policymakers that are here in this city. And so, while I think it's a noble intent, I don't think it lands in quite the way that it's intended, and, you know, there are people who are outside of Aurora that do have a vested interest in how things are happening here, and even if you look at neighboring cities who are directly impacted by the policies that we make, having the ability to donate to a candidate, and whether we block receiving the money or donating the money, it's still restricting someone's ability to give money to the intended recipient. We can call it what we want, but it's the same, the same impact. So, I understand this in theory, and I think it's worthy of a broader conversation, but right now, we don't have, legally, it doesn't sound like we have the ability to really do this, but also, it's just a much more nuanced conversation than a blanket ban on that. So, I don't support it, but I do think it's worthy of a future conversations.
So, may I address?
Counselor Member Bergen?
So, it's okay to exclude actual businesses in Aurora from receiving monies from those businesses, but we're going to be okay with receiving monies from an out-of-state contributor?
Well, for me, it could be an organization.
It could be an organization as well.
Okay, Counselor Member Bergen, Counselor Member Hills?
Thank you.
Respond.
Yeah, for me, a business is not a person, so, the people who work in that business are fully capable of donating as individual people, and if that business has a co-owner who might live out of state, that person out of state should also be able to donate to the city in which their co-owner in a business. But I don't believe that businesses are people, and so, I don't see that as the same thing. But, yeah, I mean, if you own a restaurant in Aurora, and you have two partners, and one's in California and one's in Florida, I think they still have a vested interest in supporting a candidate that they think would be good for their restaurant, for example. I mean, obviously, it could be any business. So, I'm more concerned with, you know, corporations as people than I am that. But, again, I think this is a really good conversation to have, but this last-minute ad, I think is, you know, I think is something that we can revisit in the future, but right now, we're not at a point where I'm okay with supporting this.
Okay. Counselor Member Bergen?
Yes, so, I appreciate that. If you own a small business and you're a partner, and you have a partnership as an LLC, you are people, and so, whether you're, you know, you're still, we're not allowing businesses that have two people that own a business to contribute under the current ordinance. So, it doesn't matter, you know, if they're out of state, we're the same thing, they wouldn't be allowed to either.
Chair Lawson.
Just a one second. Counselor Member Marcano, I saw his hand up first, Counselor Member Bergen will be next.
Thank you, yes. So, that is correct, an LLC currently could not contribute, but the owners of the LLCs could as individuals, because an LLC is not a person, it's an artificial person, not a natural person, and that's the underlying intent of the ordinance, is to limit civic, you know, donations, rather, to natural persons.
Counselor Member Bergen?
Thank you. We better hurry this up, or we're going to be accused of filibustering, like we were last week. So, if you're going to allow out-of-state contributions, so, that means it's okay for Emily's List, Planned Parenthood, ActBlue, WinRed, all those out-of-state groups to send checks into Aurora, so, excuse me, that's what you're saying? And I want to say, I have a small business, and I am a real person. So, I really don't understand where all this is coming from. I will say that I've done quite a bit of research on this, and it seems like it's a ditto ordinance from Lakewood, Denver, it's all the same thing, written by Owen Perkins, who's Secretary of the Denver Democrats. And I would imagine that all of us have gotten emails from him, telling us to vote for it, that this is the best thing since sliced bread, and also, he's taken contributions, he's fundraising from our ordinance. All you have to do is look at the bottom of the emails, and I find that disgusting, that someone that wrote this or helped write it is fundraising from, off of Aurora's work that we're trying to do. So, I don't get where a lot of this is coming from. I believe that we do need to update our rules, I honestly do, but to have somebody, a Democrat, you know, the Secretary of the Party, that's just way beyond me. Thank you.
Counselor Member Lawson? Mayor Pro Tem Johnston first.
Thank you. I just want to go back to the LLCs and the reason why we are not, because I know there's a lot of concern about not having those businesses. We just look, have to look at the last mayoral race in Denver, which did allow LLCs with the opponent against Mayor Hancock, and there was someone, they had a limit of $3,000, but unlimited amount of LLCs can donate, and the candidate got 10 $3,000 LLC contributions for $30,000. So, we're, one of the main reasons we didn't want to include this is we're making all of this progress on disclosures and PACs, and trying to eliminate, to have a more even playing field, and eliminate some of the dark money opportunities, and opening that window with LLCs who are not people is a problem. Can people still do that? Can owners still donate? Absolutely. Can they form a small donor committee? Absolutely. Can they form a PAC? Yes. But we are not, because of all of those loopholes that are happening, it would really undermine the other progress that we're making with this ordinance. So, that's why we didn't want to do the LLCs.
Counselor Member Hills?
Thank you. You know, I just wanted to point out that some of the organizations that Counselor Member Bergen were referring to are organizations that directly represent women, for example, and seeing as there are women here in Aurora, and access to health care is an issue for women across this country, yes, there are outside organizations that still have a vested interest in Aurora, which is why we're looking at these limits and whatnot to make sure that we have a check on that. But to say that, to say that, that doesn't count, you know, as a Planned Parenthood patient, at one point in time in my life, when I did not have health insurance, you know, that is something that is directly a vested interest in people who can't afford health care here, so.
Counselor Member Marano?
Point that out.
Counselor Member Marano first. Counselor Member Marano?
Thank you, Counselor Member Lawson. I just, I wanted to say that I appreciate the intent. I have concerns with, I guess, what, how that would be implemented. We know how expensive it is to live in the community. I've talked to countless of people who have had their children move out of the city because they can't afford to live here. Again, there might be, for whatever familial circumstances, reasons why people move in and out of the state, and so- And so, um, I appreciate the intent of keeping donations as local as possible. Um, I'm not sure I agree with its entirety. Um, I, you know, again, I agree with that portion of in-concept, but, um, I'd have issues with, uh, supporting something like that. And as well as just the timing of the amendment. I don't want to put anything, um, into this, um, ordinance that would jeopardize or, you know, create more of a legal challenge, um, considering that, um, our two cosponsors have worked, um, a long amount of time to be able to get this to the floor in, in the version that it is today, and I think it's really robust. Um, and I, I'm really appreciative of the, the considerations. That's just not one that I'm comfortable leaking at this time.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes, and I appreciate all the comments. It's really a very simple amendment to not allow out-of-state, uh, contributions. And, you know, I know Planned Parenthood was brought up, that's actually has nothing to do with city government, that's healthcare, but, um, I, I, I just don't see a place for out-of-state money, and mine is simple, that's a simple amendment. Um, it, you know, we can talk about if, if it's going to cause legal issues, um, you know, changing right now and not allowing LLCs to contribute, um, maybe that would be possibly legally challenged as well.
Is there any more discussion on the Bergen amendment? Can the clerk restate the Bergen amendment and call for the vote, please?
Yes, so this would add a section, um, 54-101-C, um, which would prohibit candidates from accepting out-of-state contributions.
Can we call the vote? Councilmember Murillo?
No.
No.
Councilmember Lawson? No. Councilmember Burzens?
Yes.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hills?
No.
Mayor Protem Johnston?
No.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor, you're muted.
Did you mute your?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Coombs?
No.
And Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
And I apologize because my computer just died. Give me just one second. Not sure what happened here. Should we, um, sorry, um, I just want to confirm the votes there at the end where it died. Mayor Kaufman, I had you as a yes.
That's correct.
Uh, Councilmember Coombs, I had you as a no.
Correct.
And Councilmember Gardner, I had you as a no.
I was a yes.
Oh, sorry. So can you, the clerk, can you reread, uh, the vote count, please? So we can make sure we have everyone recorded correctly?
Uh, we have six noes and five yeses. The item fails.
Okay. I'm going to, I would like to propose, um, an amendment. Um, my amendment is on 11, item 11D, and I would like for, to propose the following. Um, during an election cycle, a person or political committee other than a small donor committee may not make an aggregate contributions to a candidate committee or recall defense committee in excess of $400 to any one candidate in one ward race, or $1,000 to any one candidate in any at-large race or mayoral race. I am asking to propose to keep the 400, as it would be, as the sponsors have asked, but I would like to raise the at-large and mayoral, um, um, candidate, um, in financing to 1,000. And this is my reason why. Um, Aurora is the, you know, we're the third-largest city. Being in three campaign cycles myself, um, we have to actually go as at-large council members all over the city, wherein the ward council members have to, one sixth of their district population. Um, Denver has a 1,004 at-large and mayoral, and I'm not asking for any more than that, I just want to just increase the at-large, just because of costs associated with running a race and actually, um, going out to a bigger demographic that we have to do compared to a ward council member. So, um, I, as the chair, um, I'm going to ask, is there any discussion on my amendment?
Motion first.
Oh, Councilmember Bergen first. Councilmember Bergen?
Oh, yes, I, do we need a motion first, or do?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm going to, I'm trying to do both.
I know, sorry.
Can we get, can we get a motion?
You can move it.
I will move, I will move to a group.
Second.
I'm sorry. Who seconded it?
Mayor.
Second.
Okay, I, um, I'll say Mayor Kaufman seconded, uh, Mayor Protem Johnston. Now can we get discussion?
Thank you.
Can I get Councilmember Bergen first?
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Um, so I take, um, I take, um, some, in terms of running a campaign as a ward council member, um, I have had to raise a lot of money. I represent an area that actually is ve- very active with voters. So if you look at, you know, differences of vote, Ward 1 versus Ward 6, and how many people actually turn out to vote, it's, it's drastically different, um, in terms of the amount of people that, that, uh, participate. And I, I just feel $400 is, is, you know, it really is not enough. And, and I would prefer, well, first of all, I think it should be unlimited, but, but that's my opinion. Um, but to reduce it down to 400, I think it just, you know, you're, you're saying that a ward, ward does not really, um, have as much need in terms of messaging and cost, and we do. We have, we still have the same cost for websites and social media and those type of things, and, and getting the message out through various, um, you know, social media and, and other tools. Um, so I, I, I think 400 is really too low of an amount, so I disagree.
Okay. Councilmember Burzens?
Thank you. And you probably know what I'm going to say. I take issue with, with you as an at-large person wanting $1,000, and, uh, me and, but you're only willing to give a ward member 400. That's, to me, that's not a fair balance. Depends on what kind of campaign you're going to run. I, I've run five campaigns, and, you know, I, like Councilmember Bergen said, social media, um, it's the same, no matter, no matter what. Your webpage is the same, no matter what. Um, I, I just think 400 is, it's like a slap in the face. Um, you can't even, and I mentioned this to two councilmembers this week, you can't even buy an ad in the Sentinel, and I know you're listening, Grant, um, for $400. You know, not one little ad you can't buy for $400. But you would buy, as an at-large, you'd buy the same little ad, only you would have $1,000. So it, it just, it's, it's not right for that, that difference, 1,000 and 400. You know, if you want to go to 500 or 600, you know, that would make it a little bit more equitable, but, um, the equity and, uh, the disparagement of, of 1,000 and 400, um, is, is not right.
Okay, I think we had Mayor Protem Johnston, uh, Mayor Protem Johnston first, and then Councilmember Marcano after.
Thank you.
Protem Johnston.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to talk about the 400 from being a coun- councilmember, and also bring up, a ward councilmember, the issue that, unlike, um, Mayor Kaufman's proposal, we do have a, a cost, a CPI, an adjustment, um, with inflation, that will go up, that recognizes the additional costs. So it, it will not be $400 in perpetuity, eventually it will be $500. And yes, an ad, you know, in the Sentinel may cost more than $400, but when I ran, I got over 100 different donors. I think I had over 175 different donors. So it's incumbent upon us to get, even if it's smaller amounts, more donations to, to be able to run. And finally, we really based a lot of our best practices on what the state system is doing, and we wanted consistency. A senate district, a state senate district, um, they have a $400 limit, and that is way larger than a ward. And, um, I, we, you know, to compromise, and Councilmember Marcano and I really tried to, to work with folks, we, we, we did give a little on, on that increase, um, from where we originally were, but as councilmembers representing wards and the cosponsors, we just felt it was important to, to stay at that 400. And I appreciated, um, Councilmember Lawson compromising with that, with that amendment. Thank you.
Councilmember Marcano, and then Councilmember Hills?
All right, thank you, Chair Lawson. Yeah, I want to echo a lot of those comments, and I just think it's important, uh, for everyone here, and also for the public to remember where we started. The original draft was 320 across the board. The rationale for that was a state house district, which is larger than our wards by about 20%, their limits are 400, so we took, you know, 80% of that, which left us with 320. Um, and senate districts, as Mayor Protem Johnston just pointed out, are triple the size, give or take, of a house district, but they have the same limit. And I agree with the rationale behind the state limits, and that is that if you are running to represent more people, it should be incumbent upon you to not just earn more votes and to work harder, but to also be able to fundraise from more individuals, as opposed to grow the amount that you can fundraise from a smaller base. That said, um, let it never be said that we do not compromise. We did work in good faith with everyone here, and that is, uh, you know, something that we heard y'all a lot and clear on, so, you know, that's why the, I am fine with supporting your proposal for 1,000 for at-large. But having run a race, uh, for a ward not too long ago here, um, I, what I had, I think over 350 individual contributions, um, it is absolutely possible to get ads, to pay for mail, and all kinds of stuff, um, running a campaign with lower average donation amounts. So I think that this is, again, in the best interest in terms of transparency, in terms of accessibility, for our residents to actually throw their hats in the ring and run themselves. And I think it's, we're going to have a better city for it, so, thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Mayor Kaufman, just a minute, um, uh, Councilmember Hills was before you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I was just going to say that I support this. You know, I mean, I think there's a lot of different ways that you could start and do the math on this. You could say, start at 400 for a house district, at-large is average seven times larger than that, so go seven times bigger on the donations. Um, you could look at Councilmember Marcano's, you know, 80% of, of a house district. I mean, this could really go in any, in any direction, and there's a mathematical justification for it. I think this is a good compromise. It mirrors, um, it sounds like what neighboring cities are doing. It's, um, you know, I, I think I only had a handful of donations that were even in, in the hundreds, never mind, um, over 1,000. So, you know, it is certainly possible to, to run that race and not be, you know, self-financed or only have large donations from, um, you know, different special interests and whatnot. And so I think the spirit of this is to maintain, um, something that's more accessible and more fair, and so I do, I do support this amendment. So thank you for all of your hard work and compromise on this for everyone involved that's been working on it.
Mayor Kaufman?
I think, first of all, um, this is all citywide races to include the mayor?
Yes.
Very good. Um, just one point, I, I don't know if I'd use, uh, state races as a good metric in terms of the state house and state senate. If you look at those competitive races, 90% of those spending is from outside groups, so-called dark money. They buy the TV, they buy, uh, usually not radio, they do the direct mail. I mean, those campaigns are really run by the outside, so, um, that's not a goal that we certainly want to achieve.
Councilmember Bergen?
Can I make a substitute amendment?
You can, after, I do mine.
I think I can, am I allowed to make one?
Okay, can, uh, can the city attorney confirm that, please, for me, please? Can she make a substitute amendment to my amendment?
So, so what you agreed to is you were going to take these individually, so you need to vote on this one first.
Okay, thank you.
We're allowing a substitute amendment to this one. We're allowed to do that.
Can you confirm that? Um, I asked that same question, and I was told we decided to make them separate.
Well, that was on the other one.
Okay, I understand that, but I want the city attorney to confirm.
So, so you'd use the exact same procedure you did last time? You're going to treat these one by one, because what you're hearing is not a friendly amendment? So, so finish this one before we move on to the next.
I disagree with you. Uh, we've done substitute amendments in the past, and this is, this is on, so you're saying because we, we took, oh, we took Councilmember Lawson's individually with, after mine? Okay, I get it, never mind.
Okay.
We can take mine separate.
Count, thank you, Councilmember Bergen. Thank you, uh, City Attorney Rossman for clarifying. Councilmember Coombs?
Um, yeah, so, in the spirit of compromise, I will support this, but I do want to point out that, um, when we look at our current situation, um, the majority of our at-large, well, actually, all of our at-large and mayoral seats come from wealthier parts of the city. Um, and so I am concerned about the inequity that gets created in terms of representation by having an inequity in the amount of money that candidates can accept. Um, that said, um, let it not be said that I allow the perfect to be the enemy of the good, so I will go ahead and support.
Um, I, I would like to speak to this. I mean, of anybody who's sitting up here, Angela Lawson has ran a campaign on a shoestring budget. I, I'm not saying any other ward council race is any more different than an at-large. I'm just saying that it's, it goes in line with Denver. We have to do more expansion out because we have to cover more. And so I just ask for the consideration to up those to one, those limits to 1,000, and I, and I'm not saying anybody else's race is any more, you know, important than any other person, uh, any other person running a race. But I just think that because of the outreach that we have to do, uh, uh, citywide, I just ask that, um, you know, we go up to $1,000. And I appreciate the, the sponsors for compromising, and I appreciate the councilmembers who, who do agree with this for considering my amendment. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Burzens? I can't hear you, you're muted. You're muted.
Thank you, I forget. Um, I don't know where the compromise is. Wards stay the same, and the at-large and mayor gets raised, so where's the compromise?
I see the compromise in that, uh, most of, well, the, the at-large councilmembers I talked to, um, we talked to the sponsors, and they were in greens based on the, what we talked to them about offline and in discussions, that they realized that we would need a, a little bit more money. And I, I really don't see, you know, for me, if we want to, if it wasn't, if this doesn't get voted on, and they want to keep it at 800, I'm fine, but I just wanted to see if there could be some value and, and some approval in just upping those amount just based on the at-large race and what we have to do. And Councilmember Burzens, you've been in many ra- more races than I have. I've been in three cycles.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying that the outreach that we have to do as a, as an at-large, and I'm not saying anything in a ward council race, is a lot more outreach, and, um, this goes in line with Denver. We're growing as a city, and I think this cap is not overbearing. I think it's sufficient, and I think it's more in the middle. So, again, this is my proposal. If it doesn't get voted in, I'm fine with it. I just wanted to make the suggestion.
Can I ask one more question?
Councilmember Bergen, yes?
Yes, um, so does this apply to in-kind contributions, that we're going to limit those as well to the 400 and 1,000?
Um, I, my, the, I didn't go with this, that part. Mine was just contributions, but Councilmember Marcano?
That's, that is the language, and, yes.
In the, in the proposal. So it would go.
Would apply to in-kind, is what?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Councilmember Burzens?
Thank you. I, I, you know, I'm turned out. I can't run again. I, you know, I'm sitting back here laughing at all this. This is, this is, what's going on is totally insane, but I, I'm just saying, for, for you to raise, you're raise $200, and stick the ward members with 400, which is not even. 400, which is not even half of what the at-large gets, I think that's a travesty. You know, if you want to, if you want to raise wards 100 and yours 200, I mean, I would go with that, but to leave the ward members with 400 and you 1,000, I think that is horrible. Aurora has always said, "We're not Denver, we don't want to be Denver, we're not the states, we're not the state legislature, we're our own person." And I just, I just think that's, that's a terrible thing to do, and there's no compromise in that. It's all, it's all lopsided, it's all giving it to one. But I'm not running again. I'm not raising more money. So I'm just sitting back saying, "All those of you that have to run next year that are ward members, you better think about what you're doing."
Well, Councilmember Burson's, I did ask, I did try to, I did talk to the, you know, this is sometimes about compromise. And I did talk to both of the sponsors, and I hope this, well, the sponsors can, I did relay this information to them. They could have, I was going based on what they talked about. It's not just Angela, I did discuss this with them. And I did propose, just asked them, and I did, I asked them if we could raise 1 to 500 into 1,000. They said no. So I'm trying to get something that is a compromise, but I still believe in what I think. I don't, I, they're staying within what the state level, the districts are. I'm saying we are the third largest city. I'm not trying to, I, I see your point, but I don't see where it's so lopsided. It is a compromise. They could have said no, and I would have been fine with that, but they were willing to compromise and at least up that to a couple hundred dollars. And this is in line with Denver. Denver at-large councilmembers, they are at $1,000.
You said you talked to the?
I talked to the sponsors. The sponsors are Mayor Pro Tim Johnston and Council, and Councilmember Marcano was aware of this amendment.
So they told you what you could do, could and couldn't do?
No.
Chair Lawson.
No, they did not tell me what to do. I asked them, I proposed a couple things. One, I just told you. The first proposal I proposed to them was 500 and 1,000. Then I talked to them, we talked about 400 and 1,000. So I worked with the sponsors, and that's kind of what we should do. Cross the line, talk, compromise. This is what it should be about. Mayor Pro Tim Johnston.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnston.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, that is more what we should be doing, doing these like last second where the sponsors don't know what's, you know, we're communicating. And again, as comes, as Chairperson Lawson said, we are 1/6 of at-large. We still are having the rates go up with CPI, so there are that adjustments. And, you know, by Councilmember Marcano and I being the cosponsors, being ward council members, we felt like this is, this is within our comfort level, and still giving a little on the other end for the additional mailings and everything else that at-large has to do with targeting a city instead of 1/6 of the city. So, and I don't think it's a negative thing that we talked about this and reached out and communicated in a, in a good civil way. So I'll definitely be supporting this. Thank you.
One more question?
Is there any more discussion? Councilmember Bergen, yes.
Was there any, yes, thank you. Was there any consideration to just do a flat $400 so we match the state representatives?
Councilmember, who wants to respond? Councilmember Marcano?
Yes, that was something that we put forward when we were told 320 was too low. But folks, at-large folks wanted it to go a little higher. So, you know, it's part of the negotiation.
With the at-large?
Just, ma'am.
With the at-large? The sponsors? So there were actually no sponsors?
The sponsors are both ward councilmembers, but you did speak to the at-large.
But you didn't speak to all the at-large probably, right? Which, may I?
Mayor Pro Tim Johnston?
Thank you. We have offered to talk to every councilmember about this. We sent the backup information actually a week before it went to study. You know, I'd been sending things and said, "We're available to ask questions." We just haven't had, we didn't have everyone wanting to, or came up to us with questions or concerns. But I stand that we've been trying to share information and offering answers to any questions and concerns that people have had.
Is there further discussion on the Lawson amendment? Councilmember Hiltz? Councilmember Hiltz? Councilmember Hiltz? Councilmember Hiltz?
Thank you, sorry, I was breaking up a little bit. Yeah, I was going to say, I, you know, I was, I responded to a request from the sponsors to have a conversation, and this was actually not my biggest concern that came out of this. Some of my other concerns have already been addressed in other, in other sections. You know, my concerns had more to do with things like cash donations and making sure that people who don't have access to a traditional bank account are still able to participate in the process and some of those, some of those other things. And so I appreciate, you know, that they incorporated all of that. But they did send out multiple emails to the full council saying, you know, "Here's some information, we're here to talk if you have questions." And so, you know, I've sent out emails to the full council requesting, you know, feedback or asking people to share their, share their feedback on things or submit topics for public safety, for example, so that we can manage the agenda. But if people don't respond to those outreach efforts, you know, sponsors can only do so much. Same with, you know, being chair of a committee, you can only ask the full council to participate so many times. It's really up to us to respond to those. And I think they've been very, the sponsors have been very responsive to, to the questions on this. So I just, you know, want to thank them for that because I had a lot of little things that I wanted to see addressed, and we went through line by line and talked about this thing, so.
Is there any further discussion on the Lawson amendment?
Councilmember Lawson, I just wanted to point out.
Councilmember Gruber, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, but I didn't, I didn't see an outreach from you to increase this. So when you talked about reaching across the line, I think, I'm not certain which line you attempted to reach across.
Well, Councilmember Gruber, I reached out to the sponsors. So that's what I did directly, to talk to them about my concerns, and that's what I did. So when I'm saying, when I'm saying, excuse me, when I'm saying I reached out, I reached out to the sponsors, was what we should do. I didn't reach out to you, but you have the option to reach out to the sponsors and talk to them about your concerns. I think Councilmember Gardner might have reached out as well. So it's not my responsibility to talk to you. When I say reach out, and I'm sorry, I wasn't clear, I reached out to the sponsors. Councilmember Gruber.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that you misstated the fact that you reached out to the other at-large members.
Well, I reached out to some of our other at-large councilmembers, they reached out to me as well to get their ideas. And we talked, I talked to the sponsors, I'm not sure if they did, but I did. So I didn't talk to you, but you had an option to talk to the sponsors as well as anybody else does on any other thing that we do. So sorry, I wasn't clear, but that's what I did for transparency. Is there any other discussion on the Lawson amendment? Can the clerk read the amendment that I proposed, or if you want me to read it, and then call for the vote, please?
Councilmember Lawson, if you would like to read it, you had some very specific language. I have sort of a summary.
Okay.
If you'd like to read it.
Okay. During, the amendment that I'm proposing is during an election cycle, a person or political committee other than a small donor committee may not aggregate contributions to a candidate committee or recall defense committee in excess of $400 to any one candidate in any one ward race, or $1,000 to any one candidate in any at-large race or mayoral race. So that is the language. So can we call the question?
Yes. Councilmember Muriel? Councilmember Marcano?
Yes.
Councilmember Burson's? Councilmember Hiltz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner? Mayor Pro Tim Johnston? Councilmember Coombs? Councilmember Bergen? Mayor Kaufman?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gruber? Well, item passes, eight to three. Okay? Now we're going to vote on the motion, and, oh, Councilmember Marcano, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair Lawson. I would actually like to introduce an amendment changing Section 54105B. So instead of specifying flat amounts for, sorry, yeah, the small donor committees, I would like that to just be 10 times the amount of the appropriate race. So instead of specifying $4,000 for a ward race, just 10 times the amount of the limit expressed in A, Section A, and then for an at-large race, just 10 times the amount of the limit expressed in Section A as well.
Okay, Councilmember Marcano has a amendment on the floor. Is there any discussion?
I second.
Oh, Councilmember, okay, oh, can I get a motion? Sorry. So we have, by Councilmember Marcano, seconded by Councilmember Johnston, Mayor Pro Tim Johnston. Discussion. Councilmember Bergen?
What page is that on, please?
So that would be?
Or section?
Page 18 of the ordinance, it's 54105. So, and Chair Lawson?
Councilmember Marcano?
Thank you. The reason for this is just to make the logic between, or, yeah, logic with the original limits here still mesh with the small donor committees and to make sure that cost of living adjustments actually apply to small donor committees as well, so we don't have to go in and manually change it later.
Okay. Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Johnston?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Marcano pretty much outlined it, but I will support that. We just want to, you know, we made the amendment adjusting the limits just now, so this is making it consistent, you know, just good, good policy and consistency to adjust for that amendment that we just approved. So it's still in line with it, we're just, we're just making that edit because of the amendment we just approved with the limits. Thanks.
Is there any discussion on the Marcano amendment? Councilmember Gruber?
I have a question as to the need of a small donor committee. What we're talking about again is a bundler, a person who will go out and be able to bundle money from 10 individuals. That sounds like something that maybe a union could do, but it doesn't sound like something other, you know, other folks would do. So I just wonder why we have that in there at all and why we wouldn't just, if somebody wants to give money, they give money, and we don't have these bundlers with the responsibility to go and collect. And then because of bundler, if you're giving, you know, many thousands of dollars, now $10,000 to a candidate as a bundler, you obviously have an impact on that candidate's race. So it seems like those people would have too much of an undue influence on future legislation coming up before council. So again, the question is, why do we allow bundlers?
Who would like to address that question? Councilmember Marcano?
Thank you. Yeah, so small donor committees are already limited to $50 per individual. This is different than I think some of the bundling activity you might see at the federal level. And the, since it's already self-limited, we felt that 10 times was appropriate because not just a labor organization, but a group of neighbors, a business, in fact, anyone can set up a small donor committee and encourage folks to contribute. So, that's that.
I have another question. Councilmember Bergen?
So, so in that situation, a union is a small donor committee, not an individual making? Even though it's at $50 per individual, why can't the $50 per individual just come in as individuals? Why do we, I guess I kind of agree with Councilmember Gruber, we don't need a small donor committee because a union is not a person. Let's just go back to individuals and have individuals do contributions. Would be more equitable and transparent.
Councilmember Coombs?
So this helps to address the dark money issue, the IEC issue, because it enables groups of people who share some value and an interest in promoting that candidate to donate. If we completely eliminate all of our small donor committees, then we are going to see more IECs spending money. And so that's the purpose, is to help address that dark money concern that's been expressed by imposing limits.
Mayor Kaufman, we have to do Mayor Pro Tim Johnston? Mayor Pro Tim Johnston?
Actually, Councilmember Coombs addressed a lot of those issues. But I will add, since unions have been brought up, I mean, we were, we were very consistent and didn't make exceptions. We had the same rules for unions as we did with corporations. So again, this is just a way of, you know, unions are not the only groups I know from when I ran that have independent expenditure committees. Absolutely not. So, so this is just a way of saying it's existing and these are the limits, but I would say it's not, it's not specific to unions at all.
I have another question.
Mayor Kaufman? You're muted? Mayor Kaufman, you're muted.
Is there a disclosure provision in terms of the individuals having to report? When the small donor committee under your plan makes a contribution, is the information available to the public and particularly to the, on the disclosure statement of the receiving candidate, the names of the contributors and their addresses?
Who would like to respond to that? Mayor Pro Tim Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnston?
If I understood that question correctly, yes, you have to disclose that information.
No, not the, not the answer. So, so, so yes, the small donor, the small donor committee discloses, but do, is it required to be disclosed on the candidate's report?
Mayor Pro Tim Johnston?
Councilmember Marcano, my answer is still yes. I don't know if you can shed light.
As, as the way I understand it, it is currently written, yes. So since, as you said, the SDCs disclose their donors, that, you know, would basically be a part of the reporting requirements on anyone who receives that contribution.
So, okay, just want to make 100% clear. So that I, as receiving candidate, receive the check, and it's ABC Small Donor Committee, that in my report, I will then list all the contributors from that and their addresses, names and addresses, who contributed $50, $50. Okay?
Have fun with the data entry.
Okay. Councilmember Bergen and then Councilmember Gardner. Councilmember Bergen?
Okay, yeah, and I had the same question, so it will definitely then be in our reports as to name an individual that gave the $40 or $50 in that small donor committee. And then, God, now I forgot my second point. I'll have to come back.
Would you like for me to come back to you?
Yes, please.
Okay. Councilmember Gardner?
I'm.
Okay. Councilmember Bergen, do you remember your question?
I do now. Okay, so on the amount, 10 times. So what we're saying is for a ward councilmember, it's 10 times the $400, which is only 4,000. And then for the at-large or mayor, it's 10 times the 1,000, so they get to have 10,000, correct?
And again, that is in chunks of $50, but yes.
Yeah, right.
From natural persons.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any more, Councilmember Burson's?
Thank you. Since labor unions were mentioned, can, can somebody tell me where I can find in this ordinance what labor unions can give, can donate? I looked and I couldn't find it, it's so long. and I couldn't find it, it's so long.
Would any of these sponsors like to address that question?
Yes, it's in the same section, sorry, thank you, uh, it is in the same section that restricts, uh, who is able to give, um, and labor union is one of the listed kinds of entities, and they're also defined.
Can you tell me what section number, blah, blah, blah?
Sure, give me a second here.
It may be around page ten, I'm looking.
It's, uh, under covered entity, uh, so that's going to be a labor organization, is listed as one of the covered entities, that will be under the fifty-four-two definitions, uh, where it is outlined, um, let's see here.
Fifty-four what?
Fifty-four B, it's the first major section, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, I've got section fifty-four-two, it's, it's further than that?
Yes, one second, oh, it's Q, sorry, I misread the Q as a B, and then labor organizations are further defined in section GG.
It's hard to find.
And then, ex- and then the primary section is, uh, section E, where it includes, uh, established, uh, corporations or labor organizations under the Colorado Constitution, Article twenty-eight, section three, four, A, et cetera, so that's really where the meat of it is there.
Okay, I still, I still don't know what you said.
Okay.
What page, what page?
Prohibited, so the, uh, the specific prohibition is fifty-four, one oh one, uh, it's gonna be page eleven of the actual ordinance.
Okay.
Section E two, and the definitions were the earlier sections that I pointed out for you.
One oh one, E two, okay, I think I'm on the right page now, okay, thank you for doing that, no, I just, I, I, didn't, didn't the other night, when we kind of blew through this, didn't it say that there are no regulations on how much, um, union can give?
No, that's still covered under prohibited contributions.
Okay, so, okay, so it's times the ten?
That, what we're talking about is a small donor committee, do not confuse that with a union, that's a separate entity that anyone can stand up.
So a union cannot give?
At all, period.
Okay, so Delf cannot give Omar another ten thousand dollar check?
Correct.
Or SEIU cannot give another five thousand dollar check, or-
Correct, and Aurora Highlands cannot give you another big check, exactly, you're on the right track.
Okay, okay, zero, zilch, but they can, any group can get their members to donate.
Absolutely.
Okay, and it can be, well, my husband, um, belongs to the IBW sixty-eight union, so electricians from Maine and California and Florida, they can all send him fifty dollar checks.
If they wanted to, they sure could, again, we talked about, we can't do regional restrictions because of, uh, you know, stare decisis, I wish that we had a different Supreme Court that might be willing to overturn that, but that's not the world we live in, unfortunately.
Okay, yeah, I, I wanted to know about the union thing, okay, thank you, appreciate you pointing me over here, I'll mark it now.
Is there any more discussions on the Marcano amendment? Okay, if there's no discussion, can the clerk, or, or Councilmember Marcano, if you wanna read your, your amendment, and then we'll, uh, call for the vote?
Yes, thank you, so let me get back to the relevant section real quick, my apologies. So, uh, the motion again is to amend section five, oh, fifty-four, one oh five B, um, to state during an election cycle, a small donor committee may not make an aggregate contribution to a candidate's committee or recall defense committee in excess of ten times the amount, uh, for a ward candidate as specified in section fifty-four, one oh five A, um, or, um, any more than ten times the amount to a, to any one candidate in an at-large or mayor race as specified in section fifty-four, one oh five A.
Okay, so can we call for, that's the amendment, um, can we call for the, can the clerk call for the vote, please? Yes, Councilmember Bergen?
This is the Marcano's, yes?
This is Marcano. Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiltz? Councilmember Hiltz?
Chief muted.
Councilmember Hiltz, we didn't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Yes.
Um, Mayor Pro Tim Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Kaufman?
Yes.
Councilmember Marcano?
Yes.
Councilmember Morio?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah.
Councilmember Burzens?
You know, I, I would like to say this is where the four hundred dollars makes a big difference, when you ten times it, that's a big difference, but I'm gonna vote yes on this.
Uh, Council, sorry, I think Councilmember Burzens, I'm Councilmember Coombs.
Yes.
And Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
The item passes unanimously. Okay, is there any more amendments, okay, now we're going to vote on the ordinance eleven D itself.
Uh, Madam Chair, oh, eleven D, oh, yeah, okay.
Councilmember, Councilmember Gardner, sorry.
Thank you, um, I, I just wanted to address a couple of things, um, before we, um, vote on this, so first, I just wanted to, um, recognize Mayor Pro Tim Johnston, um, specifically, she was, um, really helpful with me in working on some issues and helping me, um, understand, um, some provisions of this ordinance, and so, um, you know, I do wanna recognize that she was really willing to, um, compromise on a lot of those, um, key points, um, so I am going to be supporting this, um, because I do think it brings about, um, some increased transparency, um, that being said, I do want to point out, there are several issues with this ordinance that I think, um, you know, we need to acknowledge, because both the public commenters, um, didn't acknowledge, nor, um, necessarily have the sponsors, but, um, one specifically is, um, you know, self-funders are going to become much more important under this model, um, in the last election, uh, there were two candidates that self-funded a higher amount than I raised my entire campaign, um, and, and that trend will only continue, uh, because of course, uh, we aren't allowed to limit, um, self-funding, um, I think the other, uh, concern that I have is this is really gonna drive more money, uh, towards IECs, um, and ultimately, I think, um, the, the stated goals of the sponsors, um, it, it's going to be an opposite outcome, unfortunately.
Excuse me, Councilmember Gardner, can we have people mute, please? Who's typing, I'm sorry, Councilmember Gardner, thank you, go ahead, continue, sorry.
And, and then lastly, I think my biggest concern, um, this ordinance really helps, um, incumbents, um, you know, this, it, I think we've pointed out tonight, several council members, um, that took contributions that now would be, um, illegal under this, um, this ordinance, and, you know, as a candidate who ran, um, against two, uh, incumbent candidates, um, you know, my walking on the weekends was friends and family, um, so, you know, I, I recognize the importance of, um, being an outside candidate, and unfortunately, what's going to happen with this is it's going to, um, allow incumbents to have a much greater advantage, and, you know, I just, I don't really like that, I think that's kinda like, I got elected and then I'm gonna close the door behind me, um, so, you know, I, I have problems with this, but I also think at the end of the day, um, it's an important step in, um, transparency with, um, the residents in Aurora, and I think the residents in Aurora, um, would appreciate limiting, um, uh, money in our elections, um, so I will be supporting this.
I just wanna speak, um, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Johnston and Councilmember Marcano, I do appreciate you bringing this forward, um, I, like I told, Council, Mayor Pro Tim Johnston, the one thing I do have a little bit of a concern about is just some of the new candidates, just making sure that we have enough information to really train people, FAQs, because some candidates who are gonna be running probably know this stuff, but some of the new people who are just kinda getting their step, maybe wanting to try to run, um, I really don't want them to get into a position where they're gonna fail, so I'm hoping that, you know, there's some, some FAQs, some training, um, on this law, and I hope that you both will be open, as we're looking how, if this passes, how this progresses, um, that you will be open to possible amendments or changes that are needed to make it either, to either strengthen it, or to just help, uh, fill in some of the gaps that we may be seeing in this next election, so that's just my comments to that, but I do appreciate you both working on this, and I think it is needed, and I have heard from constituents that they do want reform. So, Council, Mayor, Mayor Kaufman, and you're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I'm gonna be voting no, uh, although I, I certainly appreciate, uh, the limits and, uh, the, very close to, uh, my proposal, and in terms of only being from natural persons, uh, uh, by banning, uh, corporate, uh, limited liability corporations, PACs, uh, again, everything that's not a natural person, uh, so we're not very different there, I do think it has two constitutional flaws on the First Amendment, uh, that I've identified earlier, we, we certainly had a robust discussion on that, uh, in study session, I don't wanna relitigate, uh, that now, uh, but I will be working on two amendments on those provisions, uh, that I'll bring forward, uh, should this, um, proposed ordinance pass and go to second reading, uh, I will, I will then, um, uh, propose those, uh, or bring those, uh, uh, amendments forward on, on the two provisions that I previously identified that I think, uh, are constitutionally flawed and violate the First Amendment.
Thank you, Mayor Kaufman, is there any other further discussion? Councilmember Bergen?
Uh, yes, and I appreciate all the effort put into this, um, there are two campaign finance, uh, reform ordinances that we'll be voting on, so there's this one, and then there's, uh, Mayor Kaufman has one that follows, that actually is similar in terms of not allowing corporations and LLCs, um, I, I personally did not like the, uh, the four hundred dollar ward, uh, contribution, I, I do think that, uh, that is a slap in the face to the ward member that works very hard and represents, you know, seventy thousand, um, uh, residents in the area, um, I did have also concern about the burden on our city clerk's office, because they're, uh, from the cost analysis that was done by staff, it looks like we would be adding a couple, um, full-time employees with benefits, um, and then just things that they have to work out, IT, um, changes that they have to make, there's a lot of reporting, a lot more reporting, so last year, I think it was last year, we, we already did do some campaign finance reform, um, in terms of disclosure and, and additional times to report, this just keeps adding more needs to, um, to do reports, and so, uh, you know, some of us don't have big campaign, you know, paid campaigns, um, and, and do things ourselves, and it just, it puts a burden on, on having to just report more and more, that doesn't change the contributions, voters can still see what you contributed, so, you know, if we're gonna have people, uh, report ten times versus six times, you're still getting the same information, um, and then I guess that brings me to my point, is that all contributions are reported, um, there is full disclosure, so I do think it does stifle freedom to support candidates in terms of what amount you're able to give to, um, to your, your candidate, and, um, and finally, I think, uh, what we're gonna see is that there's going to be a lot more dark money, so it just, um, it, it's, it's preventing, you know, avenues where we have full disco- disclosure, and you can make up your mind as a voter, oh, I don't like that, that, that candidate got money from, from X company, or, or got X contribution from, you know, however many individuals, they can make that determination for themselves as a, you know, as they look at the reports, um, so I just think it's gonna drive it to more dark money, which is disappointing, so I'm, I'm going to be not supporting this one, but I will be, uh, supporting, um, Mayor Kaufman's, uh, ordinance when it comes up for campaign finance.
Is there any more discussion on eleven D, Councilmember Gruber?
I will also not support this bill, I wanted to point out that, uh, when I went to the Election Commission in an initial draft, uh, they, they voted again, well, they didn't have a formal vote, but the comments were strongly against it, uh, the Election Commission has not seen this draft, or they have not voted on this draft, but they did see the mayor's draft, and that's why I think the mayor's draft is the one I will support, this is twenty-nine pages long, I think it's too complex, and, uh, will take, uh, will, will end up putting a lot of candidates, especially inexperienced candidates, into a trap, um, the, may, um, Councilmember Bergen was the first to bring up the impact to the city staff, so in a time where we already have limited funds, twenty-five million dollar deficit this year, thirty million dollar deficit next year, we will have to hire additional people in order to augment the city staff, I also wanna point out, you know, we've talked about the fact that this was written by a, a local Aurora man, but at the same time, it's identical or nearly identical to the, uh, the bills that were introduced in Lakewood and Denver, you know, obviously, this is led by the Democratic Party, and it was extensively modified, as we talked about earlier, with, by Owen Perkins, from the Democratic Party, so this is, to, to say that this is an Aurora bill is not accurate, this is a, this is a Democratic Party bill, uh, which is the same, like, similar to Lakewood and Denver, uh, it's been supported by the Action Network Denver, which is a Democratic organization, Colorado Common Cause Denver, which is an action, uh, which is a, uh, Democratic action organization, Clean Slate Now Denver, which is another, uh, Democratic-run organization, finally, the money for this has come from Act Blue, anybody who's familiar with politics will understand that Act Blue is the fundraising arm of the Democratic Party, so Act Blue has been collecting money for this, uh, for this bill, this Aurora bill, for, written by Auroraans, for Auroraans, but being funded by the National Democratic Party, and that money is being used to, uh, support a mail campaign to Aurora citizens, we also had discussions about our lawyers, and the, the impact of our lawyers, our lawyers, that's come up a few times, those weren't Aurora lawyers, those were the Democratic Party lawyers that are being paid by these organizations that I talked about before, other points we had raised during the course of the discussion is that it encourages out-of-state money, but only from some organizations, we listed, one of the council members identified a number of out-of-state money, uh, out-of-state groups that, um, are famous for collecting twenty-five, fifty, hundred dollar checks, and having them funneled into Aurora, even though the person sending the check has absolutely no relationship with the person in Aurora, that money from out-of-state will have a major impact on our election, and to say that, again, this is a bill by Aurora and for Aurora is, is not true, this, I have another concern about the small donor committees, those are, those are, you know, I mean, to, to say those aren't a union, uh, idea, while saying that businesses can't donate, we talked about killing the, the bundler, the small donor bundler committees, and, and we didn't, um, so I, I think that it should be apparent that the many of the, and if you look at the campaign finance reports, you'll see that, that much money came into, uh, current sitting council members from, uh, out-of-state, from these outside organizations, so I will not support this, I intend to support the mayor's, uh, uh, campaign fin- finance reform that will follow this.
Councilmember Lawson?
Thank you, um, Chair Lawson, so honestly, that, what y'all just heard was something called a GISH gallop, it's typically where you just lay out falsehood after falsehood after falsehood after falsehood, and make it virtually impossible to, to respond to, so I'll touch on a couple of easy points, Act Blue is not a Democratic donor arm, it is literally a payment processor, you have to be a registered Democrat to benefit from it, though, and I don't think it's any surprise to folks who are watching, we have Democrats and Republicans on this council, and the party affiliation's probably pretty easy to pick up by this point, um, gosh, there was so much in there, where else did we go? Um, yeah, so again, the author was actually Dale Nichols, who did us the honor of actually calling in, um, himself earlier, uh, the reason you see a lot of similarities between this and Lakewood and Denver is because we are trying to go as far as we can within the bounds of established law to push, you know, for low limits and transparency, I mean, I don't really know why that's that big of a shock, I mean, that's why we didn't have things in there like, you know, prohibiting entirely, uh, donations from outside of Aurora, we did ask- We did ask after, I think, Councilmember Gardner actually brought it up at Management and Finance, if I'm not mistaken. Because I was actually really intrigued by that idea, but it turns out that's been tried and struck down elsewhere. I don't think, I don't think it's made it to the Supreme Court, but there's basically precedent that will let them pretty easily knock that down if it ever did get that far. So, we, you know, again, we have actually worked with our community here to get this done. We did reach out to legal experts because we are not attorneys, we are not election attorneys specifically. So, you know, we actually did our due diligence by reaching out to folks who work with us to craft an ordinance that we think represents the values of the folks of our city, and that will actually be a model for other cities to follow. So.
Councilmember Hiltz. Councilmember Hiltz.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, Mr. Nichols did a lot with this. My intent in honoring Mr. Sen's memory was because he has been a longtime supporter of campaign finance reform. And while I am not at all surprised, I am disappointed to hear my colleague politicize that work. And I hope that wasn't your intent to do that. I'll leave that for you, but, you know, he's not here with us. And I just wanted to honor the work that he's done over the years on campaign finance reform generally. And I just want to make that clear, because I do think that that is just unfortunate that that was wrapped up in a political tirade.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnston.
Thank you. I just want to touch on a couple extra points, including us having similar ordinances as Lakewood, Denver, and Boulder, which all are using as a model. We're looking at the Secretary of State's version. So, the similarity isn't necessarily our next-door neighbors. We looked at the Secretary of State as well as nationally best practices. In terms of the Election Commission, I did present three times. I know that some of the Election Commission members supported Mayor Kaufman's proposal, but that also elevated the Election Commission, who are not election-experts-trained attorneys in hearing investigations, to be in the midst of something that I felt was inappropriate. We also had Election Commission members feel that if you self-finance, you shouldn't have to disclose your expenses. So, yes, we disagreed with Election Commission members, and that's okay. I just, we just kept giving them versions. We listened, we adjusted somewhat, but the Election Commission did not unanimously support one or the other. There are fortunately different voices on that. In terms of the staffing, I do want to ask, just so we have that for the public record, the fiscal note that Roberto Venegas put in included in the backup, and I'll just get clarification, a future staff person, but I, to address election issues, campaign issues, but deputy city manager, is 100% of that future staff person going to be doing just our proposed ordinance if it passes, or is it a portion of their future duties? To be clear, we have not hired this person.
Right. Councilmember Johnston, can you hear me?
Yes.
To your question, and what I put in the fiscal note is, would be a position, not two positions, it would be one position, and it would still be dependent on this passing or not passing. If it passed, we would be looking at a position devoted to either Elections Administration or a deputy position that would have this as part of their responsibilities. This in and of itself, this ordinance, would not be 100% of their activity. There would be a lot of other election that are already existing, other compliance reports, candidate training, that are already in existence now. But this additional reporting and additional measures that are in this particular proposed ordinance would be part of their responsibilities. It would not be 100%. Without having Human Resources do a marketing analysis and determine what that position would look like, I couldn't give it an exact percentage. It would probably be a significant percentage, but it wouldn't be 100% of their responsibilities.
And may I do a follow-up?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnston.
Thank you. And whether our ordinance, Councilmember Marcano and our sponsored ordinance, or Mayor Kaufman's ordinance passed, would the city manager still be pursuing that position to be put into the city clerk's office in the future?
Yeah, we, to your question, even before these items moved forward, we were already having a conversation at the management level with the clerk's office, and the increased responsibility over the last few actual election cycles on election and compliance and reporting, and the complexities, and the candidates, and the amount of effort that was there. And we were already having conversations about exposure there, that we do not have somebody specifically devoted to those responsibilities. We have shared them with the clerk themselves, and one of his or her staff members to be able to provide that. So, we felt like it was something that we needed to address already, to make sure that, as you know, this is an important matter, critical to voters, critical to transparency, critical that we get it right at every turn. And we felt that we needed to make sure that we addressed that, whether that's reclassifying an existing position, or creating a whole new position, is the question. But we definitely felt, even before these ordinances moved forward, that we needed to, as a management objective, make sure that we addressed it intentionally. And usually how we do that is making sure that in our duties and responsibilities, we do have a position that is devoted to making sure that our requirements are met.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Councilmember Lawson. Councilmember Burgen.
Just to that point, so, what I'm reading on page 215 says that, should the proposed ordinance be adopted, staff recommends two potential options. So, create a deputy city clerk with a significant portion of their responsibilities devoted to election administration for a salary of between 70 and 105,000, and then create an election administrator position in the clerk's office entirely committed to the subject of elections, with a salary range of 50 to 85,000. So, I thought I heard you say that that wasn't the case, but it, I mean, it does say in your recommendation, two FTEs.
It does not. It says that it would be one or two options. We would either create a deputy clerk, or we would create an election administrator, depending on HR's recommendation and market analysis.
Okay, so it's.
What that position.
It's one or the other? Is that what you're saying?
It's one or the other. And usually in this scenario, what we do is HR creates a recommendation for what that position, duties and responsibilities, what that position should look like. So, they would say, yes, you should do a deputy city clerk, or no, you should probably do an election administrator, depending on the duties and responsibilities they would be responsible for.
Okay. And then on the hearing, would that be an additional cost on the hearings if we had to go outside?
Yes, it would. And that's one where we have that responsibility now. So, if, under the current ordinance, we would go to a hearing, it's a rare occurrence. I don't think I've seen that happen. So, we did put something in there as a placeholder, that if it did go to a hearing, we would have to have a hearing officer, we would have to probably have outside counsel. And what you see in the document is an approximation of about $2,000 per hearing. That's based on what we do in tax and licensing, and a lot of the hearing officers that we use in tax and licensing are the same hearing officers you see in these election matters. And so, that number's a pretty solid number, that if you had one hearing, you'd probably have about a $2,000 fiscal impact. If you had five, you'd have a $10,000 impact, is what I included in the memo.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burgen.
Thank you. I know Bergen and Burgen is close. So, I just want to, I just want to address what was said about Mr. Sen. It sounds like Councilmember Hiltz got the same email I did Monday from Sonia. And I totally agree with Sonia. I knew Dwayne. I ran with Dwayne for City Council. And he and I, well, I also served with Dwayne on our budget committee. So, he and I, we'd go put out yard signs together. We would email, we would talk on the phone. So, I knew him, and I, of course, he wanted transparency, but to evoke his name for something like this, I just have a real issue with that. The man is gone. He was my friend. And would he want transparency? Absolutely, he would. But I have a real issue with using his name. It's like, when we were talking about the path building, Steve Hogan's name was used over and over and over. And it was the Mayor Pro Tem then. I knew exactly how Steve felt about the path building. I know exactly how Dwayne Sen felt, because I've known him since 2005, worked with him, campaigned with him. So, I just, I just want to say, I think it's in really poor taste to evoke a nice man's name to try to get this passed. I just have real heartburn over that.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilmember Lawson. I'll defer to Councilmember Hiltz first.
Okay, Councilmember Hiltz.
Thank you. Again, like I said earlier, that's not about this specific proposal, or whether or not this passes or not. It's about someone who spent a lot of time working on this issue, generally speaking, and honoring that work. And I don't need an email to remind me of that work. I think we all have really fond memories of Mr. Sen, for anyone on here who's worked. And so, you know, again, it's not about this proposal, or whether or not this passes. You can look back at my comments from earlier, where I said the same thing. It's about just the work generally that, you know, regarding finance reform, generally speaking. So, I'm sorry that you feel that way. I feel like the conversations that we had when I was running were about this issue. I think that his comments and his work have influenced some of the people who worked on this. Whether or not this is something that he would have gotten behind is not for me to say, like I said earlier in the night. But to, but I do think it's important to recognize the work of someone who did work on this issue. And I think that we should be doing that for anyone who has worked on an issue very diligently, you know, here in the city. So, and I hope that in the future, we can, you know, honor the work that each of us did on something that we may not get to see come to fruition, even if it's not in the way that we may have expected or supported, but at least acknowledge the work that we've done, and the imprint that we've left on the city that we love. And so, that's my intent. I am disappointed that it keeps being turned into something, anything other than it is. But that is certainly your prerogative, but that's, you know, my intent, and my comments, and my approach. And you can certainly do with that what you will, and twist that into, you know, something else. But just from my heart, that's where I'm coming from on this.
Is there any more discussion on 11D? Can the clerk call the vote on 11D?
Actually, I have, I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Councilmember Bergen.
I mean, it's hard to read, it's 29 pages. Can someone tell me if expenses, you can't include meals, or gas expenses, or conferences, correct? I hope that's not allowed.
Does anyone want to respond, sponsors? Councilmember Marcano, Mayor Pro Tem Johnston, Councilmember Marcano.
So, to the best of my recollection, off the top of my head, the only thing we added was allowing childcare. But anything else that is currently allowed, I think is still in there. So, I know that there are some councilmembers who have, you know, gotten some equipment for their campaign, or paid for food and stuff like that for volunteers or whatever. I think that's all still allowed.
Yeah, well, food for volunteers, I have no problem with, because they're volunteering. But I've seen reports where people pay for their own personal meal. That's just like.
That would be a violation.
That would be a violation? Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on 11D before we take the vote? Can the clerk call the vote, please? Councilmember Gardner.
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes.
Councilmember Coombs.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnston.
Yes.
Councilmember Morio.
Yes.
Councilmember Mercado.
Yes.
Councilmember Burgen.
No.
Councilmember Lawson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
No.
And Councilmember Gruber.
No.
The item passes with a vote of six to four. I would like to ask if we could take a break, and come back and reconvene at 10:20, before we start on the next item. So, please return at 10:20. Thank you.
All right.
Do we have everybody back on?
Yes, Chair Lawson.
Yes, Councilmember Marcano.
Thank you. Yes, I just want clarification from the clerk. Was that a six to four, or a seven to three?
You just read my mind. I was going to have her, as we reconvene, I was going to have the clerk clarify that.
Right, thank you.
So, now that we are back on, can the clerk clarify that, please? Do a clarification. Thank you.
My apologies, I mistyped in Councilmember Hiltz's vote. So, the item 11D, which is the Mayor Pro Tem Johnston and Councilmember Marcano's item that was introduced tonight, actually passed with a vote of seven to three.
Okay, thank you for making that clarification.
Yes.
When was that? Can you repeat it again? Councilmember Burgen didn't hear what she said, Susan.
Item 2020-58, the item that was just introduced, passed with a vote of seven to three, with Councilmembers Bergen, Burgen, and Gruber objecting. I had miskeyed in Councilmember Hiltz's vote, so my apologies, we do have it corrupted in the record now.
Can I say, we have one previous, that you called out the vote as a six to three?